Eight point zero, you're good.
Moving everyone.
Ms. Frank.
Father God, thank you for bringing us here to sit among friends and colleagues, peers to conduct the business of this institution. We look forward to your presence in our minds and our hearts as we consider the items. We ask that you provide good judgment, open minds and open hearts. Thank you for your grace, your love in our lives. And we look forward to your will being done in all things. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
And with this with the minutes of our program going through.
February twentieth, two thousand twenty, the board trustees of Southwest Texas Junior College met in regular session. And Raffi is still the same, the Blue on green. Board President Robert Clark Lewis called meeting order at seven oh five P M. Board members present were Dr. Antonio Rivera, Maria Lenoala, Tony T. Moreno, and Amy Schaefer. Board member absent is Dr. Lopez. Also present was Hector Gonzalez, president of the college. Minutes of the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty, the meeting of Rivera and Booth is presented by Dr. Antonio Rivera. Board President Flores welcomed guests to the meeting, which included college personnel and first group Gilbert Vermaia, Dr. Mark Underwood, Margot Monta, Derek Sanval, Annie Buchanan, Randall Martinez, Wade Carpenter, Jeanne Calhoun, and C. Martinez. Also present was Marcus Arrelando, an energy consultant, and from the Uvalde leader news, Melissa Fetterstuhl. Audience to patrons, none. Spring twenty twenty enrollment update presented by Margot Monta, his presenting students sources. A D M to B S N transfer group presented by Mark Underwood, Vice President of the College. President's report was presented by Dr. Hector Gonzalez. Motion was made by Harriet Watkins and seconded by Tony T. Moreno, to approve by Angela Stabin as the Judy very, very first two thousand twenty is presented by Angela Stabin. Motion carried unanimously attached. Motion was made by Anita Schaefer and seconded by Dr. Harriet Watkins to approve the policy change. To approve the change to policy E C C local, motion carried unanimously, copy is attached. Motion was made by Tony T. Moreno and seconded by Dr. Harriet Watkins to enter into a ten year contract with M P two energy at four point one thirty five cents to full watt hour. Motion carried unanimously, copy is attached. After convening in open session, President Flores called the board into executive session at seven thirty five to consider vice presidents contracts, employees terminated, resigned, retired, new hires and transfers, and there was no discussion with the board before the training, we very possible lawsuit action. At eight twenty, the board, the S W T J C board reconvened in regular session. A motion was made by Dr. Harriet Watkins and seconded by Maria Lenoala to extend the vice president's contracts one year through August thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Motion carried unanimously, copy is attached. With no further business or action items to discuss, Anita Schaefer made motion to adjourn. Dr. Harriet Watkins seconded the motion. The motion carried at eight twenty one P M.
Corrections or additions to those minutes? The not that was standard approved as read? And with this with the minutes of our special board meeting of March twenty third.
The board trustees of Southwest Texas Junior College met in a special called meeting on March the twenty third, two thousand twenty, the USL conference. Board President Robert Flores carried the meeting to order at, called the meeting to order at twelve P M. Board members present were over there, Board President Dr. Harriet Watkins, last president, Dr. Antonio Rivera, Secretary Maria Lenoala, Victor Lopez, Tony T. Moreno, and Amy Schaefer. Also present, present was Dr. Hector Gonzalez, president of the college. Audience to patrons, none. The motion was made by Victor Lopez and seconded by Maria Lenoala to approve the resolution to underwrite delegation of authority to the college president during alternate operations for the COVID nineteen. Motion carried unanimously by seven days zero, copy is attached. The motion was made by Maria Lenoala and seconded by Anita Schaefer to approve order to postpone the May second, two thousand twenty, S W, S W T J C Board of Trustees election until November the third, two thousand twenty. The election postponed is due to the COVID nineteen virus. Copy is attached, motion carried unanimously. With no further business or action items to discuss, Anita Schaefer made the motion to adjourn. Maria Lenoala seconded the motion. The motion carried at twelve oh one.
Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not that was standard approved as read? We'd like to have as our guest today, Wade Carpenter, Ismael Martinez, David Calhan, and we're very happy to have our Usol Ross, Robert, Robert De Nieuw, and Karstie, Gilbert Vermaia, Mark Underwood, Edward Monta, Derek Sanval, Bill Martinez, Andy Cannon, and Melissa Fetterstuhl. Thank you for being with us. We have your audience and patience. Next item is the reports.
The report part five A under packet is the quarterly investment report that we're in doing May thirty first, two thousand twenty. This needs no action. It's just informing you of our investments. We had short term investments of nine million, three hundred and thirty one thousand. Our long term investments were three hundred and eighty four thousand, making the total investment amount nine hundred, nine million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand.
Steve Martinez will deliver.
Good evening, everyone. This year for the purple commencement ceremonies hosted by Southwest Texas Junior College in collaboration with Live Tassel will take place on Saturday, July eleventh. The first ceremony for dual credit and early college high school beginning at eleven A M. Livestream via YouTube. The second ceremony will be the health sciences at one thirty P M. Business, industrial and technical studies at three thirty P M. Public safety and human services at five thirty P M. Arts and humanities, communications and STEM at seven thirty P M. A conclusion of each of the ceremonies, they will all be archived for future viewing via YouTube. And all students and families are encouraged to participate during the livestream. So we welcome everyone to participate with us. Thank you to all the board members and faculty and administration to cooperated with the production of these ceremonies. So we look forward to seeing all of our graduates and congratulations.
Interesting. Next item is college financial condition report.
Report number C and your file is the financial report that the coordinating board puts out every year, assessing how the fifty community colleges are doing. There's a great deal of financial information here, but the most important thing to look at is that back in two thousand and seventeen, we failed four of our financial stress indicators. Since that time, we have committed to building our fund balances back up after acquiring, acquiring debt as we built onto our colleges in Eagle Pass and Del Rio. And you will see that now with the two thousand nineteen figures, we have one financial stress indicator, which still leaves us in a green status as far as the cohort is concerned. And that one stress indicator is simply due to the fact that we carry debt. I'm very pleased to report that we are in a much better position.
Any questions? Next item is lesson report.
With the summer enrollment.
Each of you should have a summarized report of our summer one enrollment numbers. You know, as we move into each semester, we face many uncertainties due to our current environment. However, summer one numbers resulted favorably for our institution. As you can see on the summarized report, our head count for summer one is one thousand five hundred and seventy four, which is actually about eleven percent increase from last summer. Contact hours, final census numbers were one hundred and forty four thousand, five seventy six, which is about sixteen percent increase from last summer one. And then our credit hours, we ended up at seven thousand, five hundred and forty eight, which is eleven percent increase from last summer one. Right now, our focus obviously is moving into summer two enrollment. Summer two numbers, registration has been steady. We're currently approaching our reported enrollment for summer two last year. I did provide preliminary numbers. That was as of last week. Those numbers have gone up slightly. Ms. Martinez, where are we?
Nine seventy four.
Nine seventy four. And our census summer two numbers last year were at one thousand one fifty two. So we're, we're catching up to those numbers as well. We have about four weeks until the start of summer two, which begins July ninth. And based on this trend, we're very optimistic about reaching our goals for summer two and ending the year on a good note.
Yes, sir. Slide number six in your board packet. And I would have included a copy of the April and May board reports as well. For June, we've been working on COVID nineteen, our reopen plan, our return to campus plan. And we have it further down in the agenda there. And I won't talk about it here, but we'll discuss a little bit further down in the agenda. We had a significant health storm about a month ago in Del Rio, submitted a claim to the insurance. They, that is a check for about five hundred thousand. We're still negotiating with them because what they deemed necessary for the replacement is a little different than what is necessary for the replacement. So we're working with them to try to get that to accurately reflect what it's going to take to repair those damaged roofs. So we have an agenda item for that. I'm going to ask that we table that until the next meeting to we, give us more time to work that through. The roof repairs here in Uvalde. The Wagner is completed, as so is the corner science. We had a good inch and a half brainstorm this morning, and that gave us a good opportunity to test those roof systems. And we have a little catch up that they need to do on the corner science, but the Wagner had no issue. The other thing we've been working on is our MOUs with our area high schools regarding dual credit and early college high schools. Our team spent a lot of times the springs revising a lot of changes that were needed in our MOU. And we have that for you to, to consider, as well as the UTSA with a garden co-op MOU that opens access to structural level programs on our campus by utilizing a classroom on Saturdays. And I won't go through the April and the May, but I do have it there for your review. Mr. Flores, if you would just extending the courtesy, I'd like to formally introduce Dr. Robert Wu-Jones. He's the new vice president. There's Usol Ross here in the Rio Grande area, and I'd like to just give him an opportunity.
Extremely pleased to be here. Because of COVID, I never had the opportunity to actually physically come here to validate for the interview process. Reggie was going to be March thirty first, and then go visit Del Rio, Eagle Pass, and finally up to Alpine. And things happened, and man of faith, and I'm here for a reason. But on March thirty first, I did like six Zooms back to back. And I was asked to take the role. I'm extremely pleased. I'm a twenty eight year veteran of community college work first as an instructor at Odessa College, where I actually hold an associate's degree from Odessa College after a bachelor's degree, because I needed additional skills as a young supervisor while I was living in Odessa. I received that while I was in all related work. That led me on the track starting at Connecticut to teach and moved up in administration as being a workforce. of the workforce. And distance ed, continuing ed, I had Title V under me, bandit classed it down to Presidio because that was part of our territory. And then had the opportunity almost 12 years ago to come to Charing County, be a vice president after receiving my doctorate in Mexico State as a weekend student, and to come open a brand-new campus for Charing County College, the sixth-largest system in the state of Texas. And we built a campus from the ground. Never thought I'd leave community colleges in a sense, and had been a, you know, had been working along the way until my president saw the posting for Russell Ross. He said, you know, I think this would be a good fit for you because he'd been very supportive of me in me continuing my career and advancing. And applied, and, you know, extremely proud of that because I do hold a master's degree from Russell Ross in counseling. And looking forward to working with your great institution, this partnership is amazing and want to make it even stronger. Reach out to Dr. Gonzalez right away, and I look forward to working with him, but also getting to meet some of his teams, with Eric Sandoval. You know, I've already touched base with your dean of technical studies, got to meet your welding instructor this morning. He had the bay door open, I had to stop as a former technical dean, and somebody who'd worked in New Orleans really worked and get to visit with him and his knowledge. And, you know, I miss that, miss that smell. And so I'm here to work, you know, hand in hand together and just see this opportunity takes me back to my roots of being over extension campuses in Pecos, Texas, and in Andrews, Texas. So I'm here to serve and look forward to working with a great team here and expanding education to our citizens in the Upper Rio Grande area. Thank you.
Next item is consider the financial statements of May 31st, 2020.
Yes, sir. Mark number seven in your board packets. We began with the statement of revenues and expenditures. As of May 31st, 2020, we had educational revenue in the amount of $34,800,000. Our student aid revenue was $14,238,000. We have auxiliary expenses in the amount of $891,000, making our total income $49,930,000. For the educational expenditures, in the amount of $26,888,000. Our student aid expenditures were $18,998,000, making our auxiliary expenditures $1,130,000. Our operating expenditure for debt service was $47,027,000. After debt service, we had total excess revenue in the amount of $1,620,000. On pages two through 11, you'll find the detail that supports those numbers. On page 12 is our statement of net assets. As of May 31st, 2020, we had total current assets in the amount of $8,190,000. Our total non-current assets were $45,286,000. The total assets in the amount of $53,476,000. Our current liabilities were $6,813,000. Non-current liabilities, $22,496,000, making our total liability figure $29,310,000. And again, we had an increase in net assets of $1,620,000. On pages 13 through 15, you'll find our summary of account balances. We have cash in the bank in the amount of $3,981,000. Certificates of deposit were $5,350,000, making our total account balance $9,331,000. On pages 16 through 18, we find a listing of all of our investments and certificates of deposit. We have restricted certificates of deposit in the amount of $3,850,000. Our unrestricted were $1,500,000, making our total certificate of deposit amount $5,350,000. Page 19, details and maturities and the renewals of the amount. And on page 20, you'll find our scholarship listings. We had total scholarships in the amount of $944,570,000.
Any questions or comments? Do you entertain a motion? All opposed, motion carries. Next item, consider an act of re-creation of the table. This table. Next item is consider an act on fall reopen plan.
Yes, sir. On item number nine, which should have been at the board table before you sat, is the summary of our plan. Let me just explain a little bit. Derek here, he can explain a little further. We appointed a reopen committee to evaluate all the different aspects that are going to be involved in reopening our campus and bringing a safe return to both students and staff. And so they used CDC data, the cohort data, governor's strike force data, all best practices. They've been in communication with our local health authority and been through a lot of back and forth on what it's going to take to have a safe return for students in the fall. And the first page there is an executive summary of the meat of the plan, which is the big document behind it, the 13 pages. And behind this 13-page document is the detailed plans that are specific to each department, each program of the institution. We're just covering the executive summary there. All students, as you can see from our attendance here, we're going to require masks when inside of a building. The only exception would be is if you're in a private office by yourself, then you have the ability to remove the mask. We will offer face-to-face classes in the fall. However, the number of those classes is probably about 25% of our normal capacity of our normal sections that we offer during a regular fall semester. And even beyond that, the enrollment in those classes is going to be limited by the six feet circle separation from each desk free student. So the enrollment in those classes is going to be limited in accordance with the recommendations. We're going to have staggered schedules to allow thinking in between class changes. We have distance learning that's going to involve structured, we call it synchronous, sorry, but it's going to be at a structured time. So if a class meets at 8 o'clock, they're going to need from the house via Zoom or Microsoft Teams, but at a scheduled time, so not really a true online course. Then, of course, we're going to have online courses as well. The other big area is the dorms. We don't have dorms available for students. Again, it's going to be at a limited capacity, no more than one in a room. We will reserve a number of rooms to have available should the need arise that we have to quarantine a dorm student to isolate them from the general population. Cafeteria will reopen in a limited capacity, in a to-go, take-out, prepackaged form. Technical programs, the majority of our technical programs, the lecture portion is going to be remote, and about 80% of the lab portion is going to be or remain face-to-face. We're going to have all, spread out the schedule to, again, have the proper accommodations and spacing within those labs. Those are very broad high points. We could certainly go into as much detail as you like, Derek, but I missed anything.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. With all of the decisions that were made with the intent of student success, we wanted to offer what we could for our students to get them into and onto the campus to relate to SWTJC. We have a great cloud up here, and we wanted to open up these computer labs, library. We wanted to give the students an opportunity to feel what a college would be like. And so that was the main goal, was student success. It was not alone. I have, there was a tremendous committee of quality personnel on that, and they know who they are, and I just want to thank them publicly for all their effort and what they've done.
Mr. Barnes, we would ask that the board approves our return to campus plan as presented, knowing full well that the COVID environment is very dynamic and it's changing daily. As more information is made available, we will be responsive to the changing guidance and will modify our plan accordingly. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, and Derek's able to answer specific questions as well.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item is consider an act against the MOU with a garden core.
Yes, sir. Next item, number 10 in our board packet. And this is a, an agreement that we've had with UTSA, I want to say six years, that's not about right, six years. And where they agreed to provide doctoral-level courses to a student in the Rio Grande area. The only outlay that we have is access to one classroom that they installed their equipment in. There's no other fee that we charge or that they charge us or we collect from them. I think it provides a great opportunity and access to terminal degrees for the residents of our, of our region. I would ask that the board approve the MOU with UTSA for the winter garden core.
Any questions or comments? Do you want to make a motion? Number seven. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item, consider an act on dual credit and early college high school, choose the MOU.
This is item number 11 in your board packet. And I think the first one is the dual credit partnership. And what we've done is tried, we streamlined all the dual credit partnerships are identical, but the same dual credit for one high school is for all high schools. And there were some changes in HP3.
1168.
HP5 and Houseville 1168, there required some change in the language of what's included in the MOU. Review those. I'm flipping through to see if there's anything that can hear. These have been discussed and shared with superintendents. They provided us feedback, and we made a couple of adjustments, but this is the final version that was accepted by the superintendents as well. And I would ask that the board approve the MOU revisions.
How many, how many schools have involved that?
How many schools are in the dual credit or in the early college? Please put the six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, please.
That's including Valde, La Praya, Crystal City.
All of them. Charlotte, outside of our area. And that includes primary schools as well.
Primary schools in Del Rio, yeah. That's how we get to 26.
Some big strings, and then the one here.
How many of the issues concerning the dual credit as far as them having their credit, question of all of the credit accepted by the big university?
Well, that's, that's a legislative issue, and that's one of the topics that was going to be looked at during the interim by the Senate. Interim committee looking at, what was Senator Royce's? Look at the number. There was a committee that was supposed to look at how it was being implemented this first year. Of course, COVID happened, so I don't believe any of the interim committees from the Senate have met and to address it. So it was still on the topic to, you know, so they made an attempt to correct it and to rectify it and to give more assurances to community college students transferring to, and really is transferring to the flagship, A&amp;M and UTU. Those are the ones where the problem exists. It doesn't, it doesn't present a problem to any of the regional. But with that said, you know, so there's no guarantee right now that A&amp;M or UT will accept every credit, but those are the only two that have their own rules that they work with.
And so what are we doing for our students as far as letting them know that?
So what we're doing is educating them, and one of the attempts in this dual credit MOU is to identify and have each school identify the career path for their school, for their students, identifying those courses to, again, make them aware as we meet with each student and advise them and guide them to see what their career path is going to be through student planning and have that advisement and communicate and share with the student as a parent that if your son or daughter is planning to go to Texas A&amp;M and study biomedical engineering, be aware that probably the science and the math that your child's going to take through dual credit is not going to transfer directly. And just making them aware of that upfront. Now, some of them say, that's okay, I want my child to have the experience. But since we can't control what they accept, what we can control is what we communicate to the parent, to the student, and let them know that this course may not transfer to that university for that program. They may accept it if the program is a BA in history. It's just very program-specific. But we're having those conversations with the students and the parents at a minimum so that at least they know upfront that there's a possibility.
Any other questions or comments? No, will you entertain a motion? For a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item is review, TAAS update, 38, policies, and act on local policies, the attached list.
Yes, sir. So this is item number 12. The vast majority of this policy update is incorporating 86 legislature changes. They're just throwing all the narrative and language to update our college board policy. That's all these, for the majority, are legal, which is, we have no choice. We just need to acknowledge that there's a change there because it's strictly statute. And the changes to the local are to make, make the changes to our local policy to agree and coincide with the new changes in the legal policy.
Any questions or comments? Is there statutory? Will you entertain a motion? For a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. It is now seven thirty seven. The board of trustees will convene in closed session in accordance with the community section. By time one of seven forty, consider A, chairman of deans, non-teacher personnel. As you gentlemen, code section five five one, two zero seven four. Enclosed section, item B, enclosed terminated, decided entirely. Transfers, Texas government code section five five one, two zero seven four. Board is now in expected session.